The whole meeting for October fourteenth and we are beginning the meeting at nine oh four AM. At this time, item two, I'd like to confirm the agenda. Are there any emergent items from any of the councilors? Seeing none, hearing none. Anything from administration?
Your worship, we've been asked to add an item under in camera. It would be an item pertaining to F O I P section twenty-four one B I. Personnel matter.
Thank you, and I'm looking for a motion to confirm the agenda as amended.
So move, your worship.
Thank you. We have a motion from councillor Sobel. All in favor? And that motion is carried. And for the public at home, we, it may look like it's fairly sparse here, but we have two councillors zooming in, and we also have our acting C A O Doug Legor, who is in on a Zoom call as well. And that brings us to item three. We have no presentations and we have no delegations. Item five, confirmation of minutes, five point one, the adoption of the September ninth, twenty twenty committee of the whole minutes.
I'd move adoption of those minutes, your worship.
Okay, we have councillor Sobel. Thank you. Anyway, Denise, all in favor?
Excuse me. Whoop. I don't see the September ninth minutes in this agenda. I see the September thirtieth twice.
Oh, that's a good catch then. So is there a chance to get those again? No? Okay, so we'll have to withdraw that motion then?
And postpone.
And postpone that till the next meeting?
So move.
Thank you. We have a motion to remove that adoption motion, and it'll be postponed to the next meeting. All in favor? And that motion is carried. And then we go on then to five point two, adoption of the September. And by the way, thank you councillor Montgomery for catching that. I don't know what I was thinking either. Adoption of the September thirtieth, twenty twenty special committee of the whole meeting minutes.
So when I was looking at, your worship, can I move those, adoption of those minutes?
Okay, we have a motion on the floor from councillor Sobel to adopt. All in favor? And the motion is carried. We have no unfinished business and there are no tabled items or reports. Oops, sorry. So what we need to do now is we need a motion to go into committee of the whole.
So move, your worship.
Thank you councillor Peterson. We have a motion to go into committee of the whole. All in favor? And that motion is carried. And we are now in committee of the whole. And then we should be going into camera, right? No, not yet? Oh, right, sir, that's the end. Okay, thank you. I'll get it together soon. Items, reports from administration, eight point one, potential conversion therapy bylaw, additional public feedback, which is found on page ten. And Mr. Person, Jeff, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Air. It's actually just a bit of an addendum from last week. Council submitted the public feedback that we'd gathered over the past three months at the meeting last week, but was requesting some additional information. So we've put together a plan for an additional thirty day engagement period. Not only will this answer a lot of the questions that the council had based on that report, but one of the other important things is that we started receiving requests from the public as delegations to council meetings, and we just weren't sure if you wanted those, you know, as they come in, or would it be more convenient and a bit more representative if we organized them all into one or two public engagement sessions? So that's, that's the basic summary of the report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Jeff. Councillor Sobel?
No questions, but first of all, I want to thank you for doing this. I think this is a good idea, I think. I was disappointed when the matter ended at a previous council meeting with, with basically no further action and just being tabled to a future, future time so, for first reading. So I'm, I'm happy to see this moving along. My personal preference would be that we, we set one date for, at a council meeting and, it might be a long meeting, but I think everybody should have the opportunity and doing it at one, at one time, I think, would, would make the information incoming more, more relative and, and clear. So, thank you.
Thank you councillor Sobel. Councillor Montgomery?
Thank you, your worship. Good morning, Jeff. Has any work been, been done so far, as far as drafting the bylaw?
The, we pulled a copy of the City of Calgary bylaw, based on like how we compared it to other municipalities, it seemed to be the, basically the best model for us.
Yeah.
This, like besides that, we haven't done any extra work to, to relate in to the feedback that we received. So I think that that's.
So, and so you anticipate that whatever information is kind of gathered in this next period, that would somehow influence the bylaw?
I, I think that's. You've got one space.
I can speak to that. I was making my phone call. Your worship, yeah, that, that was the intent. So the intent was to have the engagement period so that council had an opportunity to hear from the public on how they felt about the conversion therapy bylaw. The intent was to gather all that information, take it away and draft a bylaw to bring to council for first reading. At the last meeting that council had, the last regular council meeting, we had a number of people, individuals come speak to council. At that time, it was part of council discussions that, that any further engagement would take place after a first draft came back. No official decision was made on that, but that was part of the discussion, and that's kind of part of the reason that we're bringing this back to you today, because we want to know what you want to do. We've, we've had the initial engagement period, we have more individuals coming forward wanting to talk to council. What would you like us to do? Do you want to hear from those individuals first, or would you like us to bring a draft bylaw forward and then include an engagement period after that? That's kind of the direction that we're looking for.
Councillor Peterson?
Thanks, your worship. I would really be appreciative if we had the bylaw first and, and maybe had done first reading and then went to an engagement period. And, you know, we're not that far off of a year. It'll be February, it'll be one year since we did this, but I think that if we actually had a bylaw on the table, I know a lot of the information that I've, not a lot, but probably twenty-five percent of the information that I've gotten from constituents or individuals have related directly to either the Leftbridge bylaw, the Calgary bylaw, Fort McMurray, Edmonton. And so I think having a bylaw on the table makes it clear and we go forward. And, and the other thing, the only other thing I would add is that when, when council, when it comes time for people to publicly engage and if they want to engage as a public, I think if we are still in the midst of COVID or if we're in a second wave, that possibly we can set up opportunities for people to Zoom and so that both the public and the people wishing to engage are fully accommodated. That's all I have, your worship.
Thank you. I would be in agreement with that. I'd like to see the, the draft bylaw or the bylaw come to us first, and then as we engage the public, if they have specific things they've seen in the bylaw, they can also comment on that as well as the, the general philosophic idea of, of the approach. So yeah, I would, I would like to see that. I, I think if we have one meeting, my only concern is how do we, how do we limit the speakers so that we don't have a long list of speakers? I know everyone wants to be heard. It could be pretty onerous. So yeah, I would definitely want to, I would, I would definitely appreciate the staff going away, taking your time, coming back with a bylaw, and then we would, we would look at first reading and then have comments come in from the public and discuss those as they come in for presentation. Councillor Montgomery?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I just wanted to agree. I, I think that it's easy to, for people to just kind of speculate and then base their opinions and emotions on that speculation, and we should put something in front of them before we let other people come and speak to what the, the bylaw might look like. Thank you.
And following up on yours councillor Montgomery, I would want to make sure that our staff has plenty of time, like, you know, not that I want this to drag on for a long time, but if you, if you folks can put together something that you feel is really strong and it takes a little while, then we can make sure we do a really good job on this. Are there any other, councillor Sobel?
Just, I, I'm, I'm really pleased to hear this change in direction from council. I think it's, it's imperative that first reading is, is, is on the table first, or it's going to save us. I think it's going to save us a lot of time and a lot of effort, because to date, there's been lots of concerns about things that we have no intention of, of, of dealing with as far as I, I'm aware at any rate. So totally, totally in favor of having the first bylaw, the first reading of the bylaw read prior to further consultation. Thank you.
Councillor Corbule, do you have anything you want to throw in?
I think I would just like clarification. So like at the last meeting, we had said that we were going to postpone because we weren't sure what the federal government was going to bring forward. Are we now at the point where we're going to bring first reading? I'm, I'm just, I've been looking for clarification on that.
Thank you councillor Corbule. Jennifer or Jeff, did you want to speak to that regarding federal?
Yeah, your worship, I can speak to that. So council does have the ability to decide, I guess, or, or direct, sorry, administration as to when they want a bylaw to come back to them, or they could just ask administration to bring back a bylaw without a timeline there. And then they could also direct administration to conduct additional feed, or consultation after first reading. It just depends, the timeline really depends on what council would prefer.
One question I would have is when the staff is going away and working on this bylaw, would you also be looking at the, the proposed information from the federal government to, to try to craft something that would be, that would stand up then, depending on what the federal government does? Jennifer?
Your worship, it depends what's on the table from the federal government at the moment, how much information we can get, but absolutely we would consider all legislation when drafting a bylaw.
Thank you. Councillor Sobel?
Thank you. So, so the federal, federal action on this is going to involve, in, in their brief, is five criminal code charges on, on, on a, on a number of, of different items. Whether that comes to fruition or not is, we, we don't know. This may never hit, hit the, hit the rulebook, and, and I don't know that, that we should be, as a council, we should be waiting on another level of government to do something. We, certainly whatever they do is going to supersede our bylaw, but I don't think it should mean that we should be, be waiting for them to, to come in with something. They're on a, to be quite honest with you, they're on a different plane completely when it comes to the, the conversion therapy, and it's, it's, it's much, much stricter than anything we're suggesting.
Thank you, Jeff.
I just meant that we have started to receive requests for public delegations, so I think that if we, if we don't have some sort of a timeline, then, then we're keeping those people waiting. I think that would be a poor message to send.
Thank you. So legislation, legislation, legislative services, do you folks have direction from us? We're saying go ahead and, and go with your bylaw crafting, come back to us for first reading, and then we can bring in people?
Your worship, we would request that once council comes out of committee of the whole and arrives and reports, that we actually have an official resolution directing administration, please.
Thank you. Councillor Montgomery and then councillor Sobel?
Could you refresh my memory what the original, I believe that the original motion in February was to craft a bylaw, and it was supposed to be like no later than, you know, June or July or, yeah. I believe we already made that motion.
Okay, thank you. Will that stand then, Jennifer?
If I'm correct.
Yeah.
Your worship, if, if administration can go back and have a look at that, and, and then we'll take it from there.
And if that motion does have that date, we would have to have a, a new motion with a corrected date?
I don't think there was a date.
No? Okay, well, you guys are going to check on it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so councillors?
And then the end.
Okay, so councillors will need to, you guys will need to think about a motion that can come forward in the, when we come out of committee of the whole and are in the public session, when we rise and report? Okay, thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor.
And that brings us to eight point two, updated master servicing studies. And that is on page twelve. And I believe Ethan, good morning Ethan and welcome.
Morning, your worship council. Bringing forward today four updates to our master servicing studies. The department's been working on this over the past two and a half to three years. This has been a, very much a joint effort by all of the departments. So we've got our water study, our stormwater study, our sanitary study, and our traffic study. Each of these were updated to give a better reflection of our population projection, an understanding of where the town has been developed versus it hasn't. Our last update was done in two thousand and twelve, so we've got a span of up to eight years where things may have changed in small or significant ways. So each of these studies were updated, and then what we would like to do is give you the close notes of what the updates are, bring it forward again in November for a formal adoption, and from there, they would be used for backup to any of our decisions as far as development. It helps us guide future development as well as our own upgrades throughout town, and then also it would be the background to an update of an offsite levy bylaw in the future. Our water study was completed and it's shown that our existing system is quite adequate. We've got a couple of areas where fire flows or pressures are on the verge of being outside of limits, but we are good in most, in the whole town. Our reservoir as it sits now is adequate. We do have the Brentwood reservoir currently, but we would like to decommission that as it's starting to show its age and is probably running on its last few years. We are able to decommission that reservoir without building a new one. We can do upgrades to the current wildfire reservoir, we can increase the pump capacities, those sort of things. When it comes to our sanitary sewer study, the biggest one is our existing trunk system. This one focuses mostly on the central parts of town as each community delivers their sewage to kind of a location that meets our trunk system. The biggest upgrade to the system for this would be in the highway one and south industrial area, as that's where the entire town comes together and goes towards our wastewater Our stormwater system has been the most complex update. As we go through C S M I and potentially get close to a finalization of that, this, this study is adequate, it is up to date, but as C S M I is finalized, we may need further changes. From what we know of C S M I, what we've got in here is perfectly correct, but again, if something changes with C S M I, we would have to do another update to this in the future. And then lastly, in the most recent one completed was the transportation master plan. This one did an update to the entire town's transportation plan and did a lot of changes in terms of getting away from a ring road type system. We're, we're not a town that's big enough that needs a ring road. We've got our main corridors through down, especially the highways, and so this focused a lot on getting people to the collector roads, to arterial roads, and then to the highways and throughout town, so. Each of the studies are kind of on a thirty year timeline. They project out approximately thirty years. Some of them are more, some of them are less, but in general, thirty years is the average. They're, each come with estimates of costs, and this would be the support for offsite levies plus our, our capital projects in the future. They vary between a couple of million dollars over the next few years to the transportation study is forty million over twenty years. So I'd rather get into questions and find details if you wish, but that's my report.
Thank you very much, Ethan. Any questions or comments from councillors? My only one, Ethan, was in the, in the water master servicing study. Have you guys, have you guys been aware of the C M R B and its projections as far as water availability is?
Yes, so that, that information was taken into the study, so.
Okay. And, and just as a question, so I gain more information, when we look at that water master servicing study, does our staff or do you folks look at ways that we can address that future shortfall of water? Like, do you look at, do you look at initiatives, for example, that we could encourage residents to, for example, stay away from potable water on large front lawns? Are we looking at trying to, as part of that water service study, do, are we looking far ahead as far as what we can do to encourage residents to not use as much potable water on properties?
Your worship, this, the study focuses on water use and the expected demand. It does show a decrease in demand as we move forward, because we do expect that there will be initiatives to lower the use, but it doesn't focus on specific items on how to do that.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up for me. Councillor Montgomery?
Thank you, worship. My question has to do with, well, one question I have is like, can we save money by maybe not kind of, let's say estimating as far out, you know, like when we're kind of looking at the total buildout of the town, for instance, like would it be, could we save a bit of money by not estimating that far out? So I guess I'll let you answer that one first.
Sorry, if I may ask back, I'm wondering where, save money in which, on the actual study or in actual capital spend?
Yeah, on the actual study, yeah, like if we weren't, you know, having, or, or is it, like, do they just take like the previous study that, you know, that used like a total buildout estimate and just kind of use that?
The, the way these are typically done is we, or the people doing the report will go through and they'll quantify the projects that need to be done. They would do them in current dollars and then just use an inflation factor into the future. So I think cost savings on the study would be minimal, because we would still have a lot of detail that would be required as far as what the project would be and how it would do. The actual estimation part, I think, is just putting unit rates to units.
Okay. And then the other thing, I like kind of in line with what Murfield was asking about is, so because we are hooked up to Calgary for water, and then I understand through kind of the, the sessions I've attended with the C M R B, that Calgary is estimating that they will be running low on water within like the next fifteen years essentially. So are, are some of these like, you know, previous studies, you know, basically moot at this point? Like if we're estimating, you know, a, because it seems to me like some of those, the water estimates were built without, you know, knowing that Calgary was going to be running low on water, because we're talking about taking more possibly water in the future from Calgary?
It, it's a fair question. I think we've, we've definitely got an allowance for the East Calgary Water Line specifically. If the city were ever to scale back, then we would be scaled back on a proportionate basis. So as a city of a whole versus the town of Strathmore, getting our water from the city, we're a small portion of that. Now we would still be, we would be cut back in any place that they would. I think if the city's looking between ten and fifteen years, these studies are meant to be updated every five years. So what the study is showing is not indicating that we would, we should be doing anything different. It's, it's giving us what we need for pipe sizes, it's giving us what we have for expected quantities. If there's ever a shortfall in the city and the East Calgary Regional Water Line isn't adequate enough to supply the town, then the town would have to start looking at alternate sources or cutting back.
And like, do you think, like, do you think that would be built into, like, like, you know, if they're looking, say, twenty or thirty years out, like, would that be built into it saying, hey, you know, you guys need to build another, some sort of a, you know, treatment plan?
In the study, it does mention that eventually we will get to that point. It's obviously projecting quite a ways out. I think if the city of Calgary has any indications that it will be, say, within the decade.
If I could jump in, just before I go to Jim, I think Calgary has a plan, and I, I've been at the C M R B, C M R B meetings when they've talked about a thirty thirty. They're, they're trying to reduce their water usage by thirty percent over the next thirty years. Is that correct, Jim? Do you remember that? And, and I would, I would think as a C M R B partner, if they're delivering water to us, there probably will be expectations on us to also reduce our consumption. Jim?
Yes, your worship. I haven't been to some of the more recent meetings, but the meetings I did attend, I think it was indicated that Calgary was going to experience a shortage, shortage in the next thirty years, unless that's changed to fifteen. I, I believe it's.
I thought it was two thousand and thirty-six, they were projecting it was going to start, but I could be wrong.
Okay. But I think the C M R B, of course, are working on different programs as well with each of its members to, to extend, you know, reduce the use of water by the municipalities, which would allow an extending of the, the timeframes to start to have a shortage of water in the various municipalities. I think that, that C M R B would be the overreaching body that would probably deal more with that on the larger scale because of the city of Calgary providing us with water. I think though that, as Ethan has mentioned, that, that the town can do some things to help reduce the use of our water, which would, you know, allow us to be, extend the lifetime of, of the water that we get from the city of Calgary. So I, I think that we, we have to work closely with the C M R B, I think, on this, because obviously water is the crucial factor in development, and as long as a municipality wants to develop, they need water to develop. And I think that's, that's part of it, what Ethan is trying to deal with in the, in the water master plan as well.
Thank you. And one final question I have, I guess, is just to do with stormwater. So like, with a study like this, if we're, you know, like, let's say, looking towards some sort of like stormwater reuse program, would that speak to that, or would that be, this is more just kind of an infrastructure list?
Stormwater reuse would help us in the long term. So this study focuses on what we're allowed to discharge as far as total water. So if we came up with something that reduces the amount of stormwater that we're actually discharging, it would be helping us in the long run. So if, if there's an initiative to reuse stormwater in some form, the next update to this stormwater study in three to five years, if, once that was implemented, would be adjusted to suit that.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you. And Ethan, just two comments, which, no questions, but one of the things that I'm quite interested in, and it's a departure from what we were told in the past several years, is this idea that we won't need a new reservoir. I think that's really good, because we had been told that we needed to plan on getting ready for an east reservoir, so that's good news if you folks feel that your upgrades will do the trick.
Yeah, I'm, at, at some point, we absolutely will need an east reservoir, but, but based on current projection of population and where the population is happening, like specifically on the west side of town, the reservoir is not a requirement in the short term.
Good, that's good news. And then the last thing I wanted to say, the stormwater master servicing study, that, it seems like you folks have found a good solution in the Southlands there for another stormwater pond. It sounded like we were in a difficult, we were in a precarious position at one time as far as not having enough storage capacity for future subdivision development, but it's, am I correct now in saying that if we can do this on the Southlands, that should help our developers and builders be able to continue developing and we'll be able to move that stormwater there?
Yeah, the, what's, what's called Pond Seven in the report is focused on the eastern portion of town, so yes, being able to build that pond will definitely allow development to happen over there.
Thank you. That's another good news story too. That's really good. Thank you. Councillor Sobel?
Just, just lastly on the water issue, your worship, I, I think it's important for everyone to know that C M R B is, the water issue is, is a priority for C M R B, as it is obviously for city of Calgary, and there's lots of, lots of work being done in that regard, and, and, you know, there's some, there's some optimism that, that a solution to the water shortage that Calgary is, is, is looking at could be, could be dealt with, and, and I don't think I want to. And 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 I I don't think I want to go any further than this because everything's very speculative right now, but there there just to say that there's there's a lot of work being done and it is a concern and it's it's something that's at the top of the list of of priorities for for CMRB and 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 in their in their conversations with the province as well.
Thank you. That's that's a good point. Just before I go to Councillor Montgomery, a question for Mr. Legore with administration. When we look ahead as far as our water usage and and we have that east east water line coming from Calgary, would administration be be looking at or would you would you be considering a way to help residents if they choose to do some zero escaping on their properties? Like, my question is, are there any communities that look at rewarding residents, either, I don't know, looking at a a percentage reduction in property taxes or something like that where if we want to encourage residents to change their front yard so that they use less potable water, is that something that's a viable idea?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to council, there are number initiatives we could look at for the town to help and encourage residents to reduce their consumption. For instance, in Spruce Grove, at one time, we put a rebate program for low-flush toilets to help reduce consumption. Highly successful. But there's any number initiatives we could look at if council was so desired.
Thank you very much for that. Councillor Montgomery? Okay, we're good. We we don't have anything from Councillor Montgomery and we have one thing from Mr. Simpson and then Councillor Peterson.
Just just to follow up on the previous comments, I recall that the CMRB, one of their consultants that was doing a report on the water, had surveyed the municipalities in terms of where they did they have incentives for people to use less water. And I believe there was one or two that did, and I can't recall whether it was Erdri, Okatokes or where it was, but one or two of them, I believe, did have an incentive for their residents to use less water, particularly on their lawns.
Thank you for that. Is that something, Mr. Mr. Legore, just before we leave this, is this something that you would want direction from council officially as far as looking at possible incentives in the future regarding water usage?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor. Leave it with us and we'll come up with some type of plan and then we'll come back and talk to council about it.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you very much. Councillor Peterson?
Thank you, worship. I just my my questions just relate to the new updates regarding the significant input of funds to the irrigation districts in Alberta, both federal, provincial and and the irrigation district input into those funds, if if how that will impact on both our our stormwater and our our water security and and how we would think about being a a part of that conversation going forward. Because I think it will impact both on storage and system demands in terms of how how that multimillion dollar project is going to go forward. And this is a question to the people who who sit on the CMRB and I I don't know if this has been a a consideration, but I don't remember how how long ago that the Alberta government was no longer accepting surface water applications to withdraw water from the Bow and the Old Man and the South Saskatchewan. But I understand that 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 might be back on the table again and and that would have, as Councillor Montgomery pointed out, the daily water license for Calgary will start to be limited probably in twenty thirty-six. And and so if they change that water licensing, I think those are those are things that are really important to keep on our radar. And I know that the other thing, at the very beginning of the CMRB, we talked about about this whole idea of surface water application, water licensing and and water limiting and how that would work out when you were downstream from Calgary. And the CMRB at that time talked about looking at provincial legislation or lobbying for provincial legislation around that. And so those are all things that I'd be interested in hearing when when this comes back. And I I think that particularly with regards to the whole stormwater and water limiting and licensing, the irrigation injection of money is going to have an impact on us. And lastly, when we put in those stormwater ponds, my last question is, will that increase flow to the outfall and and will that have an impact on on future negotiations with our six of the partners? Thank you.
Councillors, through the chair, I as far as the irrigation investment, I'm not well-versed on that, so I will look that up and come back to you for the next meeting. As far as as far as the pond, the intent of the larger pond or the new pond is to collect water and store it before we have to release it so that we can maintain our release rates.
But but it would it increase, it would likely increase quite significantly, correct?
No, the the intent would be to maintain our release rates. It would it would collect water until we can release it at the same rate.
Okay.
Thank you, Councillor Peterson. Thank you, Ethan. So there are no further questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ethan.
And that brings us to item eight point three, council procedural bylaw review, page seventeen. Ms. Swatsky.
Oh, yes. Thank you, worship. I know that council's really excited about this topic. So, yeah, worship, we're bringing the council procedure bylaw back for council's review and for discussion. The point of this agenda item is to actually generate some discussion among council in regard to if their procedure bylaw is is working for you. Also, any recommendations you may have moving forward. And we also have some recommendations moving forward. The intent is to discuss the bylaw over the next couple of meetings and then to bring back some amendments and at a further meeting. So like I said, like I said, we're hoping to divide this into two parts. Today, we're going to talk and consider the definitions in the bylaw, councils, committees, council meetings, council agendas in camera and minutes. And we're also going to be talking about on November eighteenth, our general meeting procedures, conduct in meetings, motions, public hearings and bylaws. So as I'm sure council knows, the the purpose of the procedure bylaw is so that it sets out the procedures for council for the orderly conduct of council and maintains a balance between informality and the requirements of the legislation. Council procedure bylaw applies to obviously council members, but it also applies to administration. It applies to members of the public present at meetings and members of the public that are presenting to council at council meetings. Other documents within the bylaw that govern our procedures are, number one, the municipal government municipal government act, which takes precedence over our bylaw. And also, we have Robert's Rules of Order, should our bylaw or the municipal government act not speak to the procedures we're talking about. So the first area that we've noticed some challenges with is the matter of or the definition of two-thirds vote. So currently in our bylaw, two-thirds vote says, sorry, that it is a vote requiring at least two-thirds, five of the members of members who continue to hold office or appointment to vote in the affirmative or affirmative. We've had some issue with that definition because our practice and the definition are unclear and they don't match up. So we're wanting to make it very clear what two-thirds is. So we're recommending that council adopt two definitions of two-thirds vote. So the first definition of two-thirds vote would mean two-thirds of the members presenting and voting properly at a properly called meeting which has quorum. So for instance, we have five members of council here today. It would be three out of the five members that would make the two-thirds vote. Then additionally, we're recommending to add two-thirds of the whole of council. And that would mean two-thirds of all of the members who are elected and who are still holding office on council, so five out of seven. If we do that with two-thirds vote, then we also need to talk about unanimous consent because that could have two meanings as well. So unanimous consent, we're recommending the two definitions there. Unanimous consent of the members present at the meeting and unanimous consent of council as a whole. Now, it does get a little bit trickier when adopting two separate definitions of each one because in the procedure bylaw, in your appendix, appendix three, there's a number of motions that either require two-thirds vote or unanimous votes. And what will have to happen is council will have to go through those those votes and determine which definition they want to apply to those votes. So I'm going to open it up for any questions or comments on that, just because this is kind of a significant change from what we've had.
Thank you, Jennifer. Are there questions or comments, councillor? Oh, councillor Corbion.
Thank you, worship. I do have a kind of a question on which definition are we going with? Does that mean or do you expect that council could almost manipulate a situation, you know, for to go their way? That's that's one of my worries. That's when you say that there could be an issue where we're having to choose which definition we're going with. I think that there's a lot more loopholes with that.
Don't understand.
Well, what I'm meaning is, okay, so we're doing two definitions. Is there an easier way for, like, how is council going to decide which definition they're going to go with in in each circumstance? That's that's my issue. I'm just needing more explanation, I guess. Jen, or Ms. Swatsky had said that there may be issues with that.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer, did you want to speak to that?
Thank you, worship. Yeah, so I don't know if there's if it would create issues. I think it would definitely but be much more, there would be less leeway by adopting these two different definitions. The issue that kind of comes up is if you adopted if you adopt one, for instance, the two-thirds of the whole of council, then you're going to run into issues where council cannot move matters forward because it's it's too restrictive. For instance, council needs to have a two-thirds vote to allow third reading of a bylaw in one meeting. So when there's a bylaws coming forward, like housekeeping bylaws, et cetera, that would have to wait and it would slow down that process. Those are some of the things that council needs to take into consideration. However, if you do adopt those two, the two definitions, you can decide what matters each one of those definitions applies to.
Thank you. Councillor Montgomery?
Thank you, worship. Yes, I I agree with with this modification and I guess for the public, I'll give an example. Sometimes the agenda will come out and 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 so, you know, members of council will see the agenda and then sometimes members of council may not be able to attend. And they would maybe make they would maybe make attempts to attend if there was an important issue on the agenda that they felt needed their their vote. And the idea that I would like to prevent is for other members of council to be able to put items on the agenda without all members of council being able to review those agenda items ahead of time. Essentially, like, if you don't have the two-thirds kind of defined well, you could have three members of council come, which is a minority of council, you could have three members come and and put something on the agenda and pass it without the actual, let's say, support of the majority of council. So that is something that I noticed is is kind of an issue with the current definition. So thank you very much, administration.
I have a question and it'll go to councillor Sobel. Jennifer, if if we go to that, I think you said two-thirds vote at the start there, the recommended amendments. Are there concerns that three out of five, for example, wouldn't necessarily be two-thirds? It's sixty percent. Is that a concern?
Your worship, it depends what definition you go with. So if it's the if it's the two-thirds of the whole council, it's five out of seven. That's what you would have to have. If it's the two-thirds vote, then you would if you had five members present, you would need three for the affirmative.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Sobel?
Thank you. I just want to clarify something as well, further to what councillor Corbion was talking about. And that is in regards to the determining which definition to use. I I'm I'm assuming that you're you're saying that we would have to determine exactly those things prior and and vote on them at a future meeting to change the change the the definition of of for each time we deal with this issue. It's not going to be something that's going to, it's ongoing. It's going to be in our bylaw as to what we need for a vote.
Yes, through your worship, yes, absolutely. So that schedule three, the appendix three that I just spoke about, we would have to go or council would have to go through each one of those motions and determine which definition applies.
Right. Do we have a list of those, Jen?
Yeah, it's an appendix three of the bylaw, your worship.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments on this part? Okay.
Okay, so moving on. So council committees, so council's procedure bylaw establishes all of council's committees. Their terms of reference are in the are an appendix to the bylaw. Committees have to operate within the terms of reference and they can also propose policy changes to council. Committee members can serve a maximum of four years unless extenuating circumstances apply. Council has a number of committee members presently who have served much more than four years on the committees. So that's something that council will have to consider in their upcoming organizational meeting when appointing members to those committees. Now, there are some recommendations here as well because there are a number of committees that, number one, that are just not active anymore. So we've identified five of them. That's the Community Investment Fund Committee, Downtown Design Review Committee, Public Arts Board, Tourism Development Committee and the Strathmore Recreation Facility Development Committee. We will be recommending that we remove those from the bylaw and it does council have any questions about this item?
Thank you. Councillor Montgomery?
Thank you. I'm just wondering if it's necessary to have the committees within our procedure bylaw, like if we couldn't separate and have a separate one?
Your worship, we could definitely have a separate bylaw. We could take them right out and establish committees by a separate bylaw. Yes, pretty much.
Like, would you would you say that that would be a good idea or just not worth it?
Your worship, I don't think it would make much difference. It's it's within this bylaw. It doesn't matter if it's within this bylaw or a separate bylaw. If you're looking maybe for more clarity and and a better place so that it's kind of right there, we can definitely pull it out of this bylaw.
Okay, yeah, that essentially was just to kind of clean it up and then have them specifically for the specific purposes.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Sobel?
A little concerned about the extenuating circumstances. Is that going to be defined?
Your worship, that's a really good point. We have not defined it in the current bylaw. Administration's opinion, extenuating circumstances, I think how council has practiced is that we have no one else signing up to be on the committee. It's definitely something we should have a look at. There's also, I'm sorry, council also has a council committee policy and it also talks about appointment to committees within that policy as well. So that's something we can bring forward when considering appointments for the committees during council's organizational meeting.
Yeah, and and I I'm not sure that I'd like taking this out. I I like the idea of it being in in our procedural bylaw because it there are, they're they're part of us, they're they're part of council's priorities and they're they're actually committees of council. So I I think they're properly placed myself. I I think it's, I don't think it's, it makes a big difference either way, but but I like the the importance that it places on these committees being part of our our procedural bylaw.
Your worship, also, I'm sorry, one more thing I forgot to mention earlier was that council's committees are bound by council's procedure bylaw. There are procedures in the in the bylaw for the committees as well. So if we would separate them, we'd have to take that out of the bylaw as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so our next area in the bylaw to talk about is council meetings. So right now, council obviously has two regular council meetings on the first and third Wednesday of each month, and committee of the whole meetings on the second Wednesday of each month. To extend those meetings, you need a two-thirds vote. So there's another area that we may have to consider. Also, special council meetings can be called by the mayor or by the majority of members of council, and they have to be held in public. One area under council meetings that we're going to recommend, an amendment, is for the time set for special council meetings. Right now, in our bylaw, it says that all special council meetings shall commence at 7:00 PM if we have more than 24 hours' notice, and if less than 24 hours' notice, it can be specified by the mayor. We're recommending that we just change that to all special meetings can commence at a time specified by the mayor. We have council agendas. So council agendas are compiled seven days prior to the council meeting. All agenda items are due by noon the Wednesday prior to the meeting. So that includes anything being submitted by council, like notices of motions, but not administrative inquiries. Those can go up into the day of the meeting. There's three ways council members can add items to the agenda. That's by administrative inquiry, notice of motion, which, like, again, must be submitted by 12:00 noon on the Wednesday prior. And also, this is an area we kind of get mixed up a little bit. On a notice of motion is intended to present a motion that will be debated at a subsequent meeting. So our procedure bylaw isn't 100% clear on that, but typically, that's how notice of motions work. A motion is submitted, it's in the agenda, counselors can see that it's there, and they'll, and they also see the date at which that motion will come forward for debate. Right now, we're kind of wavering on that a little bit, so we just need to make that clear in the, in our procedure bylaw to, to reflect how notice of motion should, should work. And then also, urgent business is another way council can bring an item forward. However, urgent business must be a genuine emergency, and also, urgent business is added by a two-thirds vote. That's another area we probably could use a little bit of work on. We do add a lot of items to our agendas, and in our procedure bylaw, we're actually, should only be done if it's urgent business or if it's submitted with the agenda. Any questions on that part?
I was under the impression, like, and I guess maybe we didn't do it, I was under the impression that we were changing the, the notice of motion process so that just by sending it out through email, that was the notice?
Your Worship, so, so we've wavered on that, and it hasn't been quite clear. My recommendation is that we make it clear in, in the procedure bylaw. Typically, a notice of motion is, is just kind of how I described. It's put in the agenda to give everyone, council and the public, notice that this motion is coming forward at a subsequent meeting. So we'll bring back clarity around that in the procedure bylaw so that everyone is clear how the process should work. Okay, urgent business, I kind of just touched on this. So the reason we have identified two-thirds of council in the, oh, sorry, in the procedure bylaw, a two-thirds vote to add urgent business, there's two different ways. So if you want to apply, so here's an example of where you could apply that, the two-thirds definition. So two-thirds of the whole of council, that ensures that there's no surprise items on the agenda brought forward when not all members are present. Or you could apply the two-thirds of members present and voting, and then that has benefits because it can also allow council to deal with urgent matters when all members of council are not present. So as you can see, there's kind of two different, and there's, there's benefits and there's, and there's not, you know, in choosing, yeah, in choosing either of those definitions.
Counselor Peterson.
Thank you, Your Worship. The only, the only consideration that I think is critical for council to make, no matter which way they go, is that there is a principled idea of what the purpose is. Is the principle to serve the business of the community and move the agenda of the community forward, or is it to serve the needs of counselors? So somehow, if, if that, if, if we understand clearly what our principles are, what our core values are, then I think we can always move forward. And I think that, you know, in terms of two-thirds majority, you know, I've sat on 40-some governance boards in, in, in my adult life, and, and I've never, I've never seen it be controversial to, in, in any of those cases, of a two-thirds majority of, of the people who are in attendance. And I think that, providing that there is quorum. And so quorum becomes actually more important in terms of how you establish quorum. And, and so that would be a, a major, a major consideration for me in moving forward, that we don't move outside of the realm of Robert's rules, and that we stay with something that is broadly understood and acceptable both legislatively and through the MGA, and, and we stay consistent with all of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sobel.
Just further to, further to that, and I appreciate that we're going to have to have a discussion on this in the future, but the, the thing that immediately comes to a concern for me is, is if it's two-thirds of council, of the whole of council, and there's four members of council present, we have to bear in mind that we only sit three times a week now on regular council meetings. That was the option of a special council meeting, but we've had many occasions where administration has brought in something of an urgent nature that had to be dealt with, and it had to be dealt with quickly. And this, and having it as the whole of council would prohibit that from happening because we would never get two-thirds of the whole of council. So that would actually just stop the process right there. And, and further to Counselor Peterson, this stuff has got to move. We've, we've got to keep, keep moving with the majority of council, with the majority of council, period, in favor or against an issue. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Montgomery.
Thank you. I, I would suggest that there aren't, I mean, like, in my time on council, there's been a incredibly small number of instances where something was so pressing that it had to be decided at that meeting. And I, and, and I, I think that, you know, if there is, is something that's so amazingly pressing, that it's, it's very easy to just call a, a special council meeting. One thing I've learned over the last number of months is that it's important to have a procedure bylaw that is not, not constructed to deal with kind of good situations where everyone's getting along and everyone's willing to follow the rules and, and act, act honestly and, and with the best interest of the town. This bylaw needs to be constructed to deal with the times when members of council are not seeing eye to eye, and when there are controversial issues coming forward that do need all of council to weigh in on them. So that's why I would not be willing to, I would not be willing to, let's say, put the control of the town's business in the hands of a minority of the council. Thank you.
Thank you. My only concern with two-thirds of the whole of council, again, is said, was said earlier, is that it could really slow processes down, and it, it can be very limiting as far as what may need to be gotten done. So, yeah, that's a, it's going to be an interesting one. Thank you. Any other comments from counselors? Okay.
Your Worship?
Counselor Peterson.
Just before we go on, I think that, you know, in light of what Counselor Montgomery's talked about, I think it's very, very critical to, to sort of know the landscape. And I, I've only, this is only my second term on council, so I don't have the experience of yourself and Counselor Sobel, but attendance at council meetings becomes imperative to move business forward. It becomes almost impossible under, under the proposal that Counselor Montgomery is thinking about. I would, I would really like to hear about, you know, to me, in this last council, the attendance has certainly been significantly worse, due, due to all kinds of considerations. It's not on the backs of counselors. It is COVID conditions and all kinds of other, other pending issues. But it would be interesting to see how many times that we have not had seven counselors at the table in this last term. In my previous term, it was extremely rare to not have all seven counselors, except in one case where we had a medical issue, and then that was approved. In this council, for, like I said, for, for a variety of issues, it has been really common. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so our next area is to discuss is in camera. So as council's aware, any matter that's discussed in camera must fall under an exception of disclosure in the FOIP Act. No minutes are taken in camera, no decisions are made in camera, and what's discussed in camera must remain in camera. Some, and I took this right from the municipal affairs. Any background information on confidential items should be circulated during the in-camera session, and then they should be collected before closing the section, or session and going into open meeting. People who could be present at in-camera meetings, council members, the CIO, and any guests, and those, those individuals must be recorded in the minutes as attending the in-camera item, or in-camera session, I'm sorry. If direction is given or decision is reached, then a resolution must be made in the open meeting. One area where we've kind of haven't been clear on is whether we can just come out of in-camera and make a resolution, or if it has to be added to the agenda. My recommendation is that council should be able to make a motion when coming out of in-camera that would not need an addition to the, to the agenda. And the, the reasoning behind that is it's already an item on, on the agenda. Also, there's some examples that we have there on things that should not be discussed in a closed session. And this one has always been questioned, budget deliberations. And we're saying that we don't believe that budget deliberation should be discussed in closed session, it should be an open session. Any contentious issues that don't have anything relating or under FOIP, an exception of FOIP that can be applied to it, should not be discussed. Tax recovery, discussions regarding budget requirements for staff members and setting salary ranges. And then the, the only other thing that we had there is that only that matters that are included on that agenda should be discussed in camera. And we're making a small recommendation or something for council to consider that perhaps there should be a provision for unanimous approval to add an item to the in-camera agenda. So just a, a thought. Any questions there?
Just, yeah, just before you leave, that, do we also need to consider, I know it says, you know, you cannot divulge anything from in-camera meetings, and for the people at home, there are sensitive issues sometimes that have to be dealt with in camera. For example, situations that deal with labor, you might be discussing a personnel matter where names might even come up. Those kinds of things have to be done in camera to protect people, and there are other situations where you might be dealing on a, on a land deal, where sensitive negotiations are going on. Those need to stay private too, until we can take care of it in a public forum. My question is, we have all these things, and then it says, you know, what can and cannot be divulged, but what happens when you have a council where things are leaked from in-camera? And, and I don't know if, if our bylaw should look at, at what you do when you have proof that in-camera information, and I can think of two situations in the, in the past two terms where sensitive information was leaked to the public, and if you have proof of that, is there any teeth in this? Let's go to Mr. Legore and then Jennifer.
You, Mr. Mayor, that, excuse me, has historically been a very tough one to deal with. You can put in your code of conduct policy, you can put some great words in there that how you would deal with chastising a member, such as you could remove, remove them from future meetings, but the concern with that is there could be a different topic that they, they feel they should be present, and they really have the right to be present. So it's a very difficult one to deal with. But if you have a confirmed, you know for sure, the person that leaked the information coming out of in-camera, there is ways that you can deal with that.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer, did you want to speak on that too?
Your Worship, Mr. Legore covered what I was going to say.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from counselors?
Your Worship?
Oh, did, Counselor Peterson?
One of the things that, when we were looking at this in, in the last term and, and coming into this term, one of the things that, that I saw happening in, in other jurisdictions is that they had somebody assigned within the organization that would determine whether or not the, the proposal to go in camera was legitimate under the MGA and under FOIP. And so they had, you know, like, someone in Jennifer's position, or, or somebody, you know, in that legislative services arena that was trained and well-versed in this process, and, and under the council procedural policy, there was agreement that it would be under the auspice of, of that judicious process to decide whether, what went into in-camera. And I, I just wonder, you know, I listened to, to Ms. Watzke's, you know, that you would need a consensus vote to go in camera, and I think, well, then, you know, then what would happen around those issues that, that Mayor Fuel spoke to? So it's just considerations going forward of, of things that we could possibly utilize.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Your Worship, in the current procedure bylaw, under Section 46A, all in-camera agenda items are approved by the CIO and the town clerk prior to being added to that agenda. So we do have that process, however, I, I think I understand that you're coming from, if an in-camera agenda item kind of pops up at a council meeting, how do you add it? So that's definitely...
There would be a ruling.
Yeah, so there's definitely, I think we can provide clarity within a procedure bylaw coming forward.
Thank you. Okay, Jennifer? Oh, Counselor Montgomery.
I'm just in, in line with what Ms. Watzke was just talking about. I, I would like to see an amendment where it's not, it's not the decision of the, the town clerk and the CIO to approve what's on the agenda.
I'm not saying, Your Worship, if I may interject?
Yep.
I'm not saying that the clerk approves or disapproves, other than, you know, in terms of subject matter. I'm saying approves or disapproves content in, that they, that it meets the Municipal Government Act, Government Act, Section 153, and the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, that, that that would be the ruling, that, because counselors generally don't have experience or training to the degree that would allow them to make those kinds of, of judgments. And so, so it would just be purely on, on the content, not on the context, but on the content.
So you're saying what would be allowed in camera versus public?
That's correct.
Okay. Counselor Montgomery and then Counselor Corbion?
I, I don't disagree with Counselor Peterson. That's actually a separate issue to what I was, I wasn't really referring to what she was talking about. I was saying, in general, as, as our, our procedure bylaw generally states that the agenda is approved by the town clerk and the CIO, I would like to see a different mechanism for approving what goes on the agenda, if, if that's, if there is another mechanism. Thank you.
Jennifer? Jennifer?
Your Worship, I guess administration's wondering, what would that look like for Counselor Montgomery? Because, sorry, right now, I'm maybe just describing a process that's not exactly within the procedure bylaw right now. Agenda items are approved by the CEO and clerk to be put on the agenda and then reviewed with the mayor prior to the meeting. Perhaps there could be a change in that process, but...
If I could just jump in before Counselor Montgomery, it would be very difficult for us to try to approve an agenda when we can't even meet unless there are certain criteria met. I don't understand how we would be able to pull that off, other than looking to our administration and legislative people. Mr. Legore and then Counselor Montgomery, and then Counselor Corbial.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The best person to determine whether an item is qualified to be discussed in camera or not is your FOIP officer, which in our case is the clerk. And the rules about this were relaxed recently with amendments to FOIP, and it's fairly broad now, but your FOIP officer is the one that should determine whether it meets the criteria not to be discussed in camera.
Thank you. Counselor Montgomery and then Counselor Corbial.
Thank you. So just to be clear, like, I guess, yeah, I'm not referring to anything to do with in camera, but this was just like, something, like, as I was reviewing the procedure bylaw, I noticed that there's that clause in there that states, let's see here, it's, yeah, essentially, like, I'm just talking in general, not with regards to in-camera, approving in-camera items, I'm just saying, you know, like, is, like, do other municipalities approve agendas differently than we do? Just a general agenda. Is there other, is there other ways to, besides leaving it in the hands of the town clerk and the CIO to approve what goes on the agenda? Do other municipalities have any other models?
Jennifer?
Your Worship, just a note, that council does approve and adopt the agenda at the beginning of every meeting, so if there's an item that council doesn't want on the agenda, or if they want to add to the agenda, that would be council's opportunity to do so.
And since administration deals with the day-to-day, week-to-week operations of the town, you would have much more knowledge of items and issues that need to come to council. So for us to start to make a decision, to make decisions on what's going to be a part of the basic public agendas would mean that it might bring us dangerously close to getting into operations, and that's not something we do. We're more of a policymaking, budgetary group. Counselor Corbial.
Thank you, Your Worship. I do like the fact that if we did have to go through, like, say, Ms. Swawsky, or Legislative Services, to make sure that it qualifies, I guess your in-camera agenda qualifies to be in camera. I actually do like that kind of step, and I'm, yeah, I'm not actually sure who else could really approve the agenda, because the CIO is the person who is in between staff and council, and he's the only one there right now. I don't know how else it would work.
Thank you. Counselor Sobel and then Doug Legore.
Just, I think it's a terminology that we're having an issue here with. Aleged Services is not approving the agenda. They're recommending an agenda with input from, often with, from input from the mayor and council, so, and we have every opportunity to change that at that stage in regular council meetings, so I just, I'm just not sure who else could do this, and I think it's really important that it remains the same.
Thank you. Mr. Legore.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. The clerk was definitely right. Council has control of the agenda. You approve the agenda, you have the right to add, delete, anything you want. So what we're bringing forward to you as administration is just a recommendation. You people have the right to change that anytime.
Thank you. Okay, moving on.
Okay, I believe our last item to talk about today is...
Sorry, Jennifer, I've just had a request if we could take a quick five-minute recess.
Sure, Your Worship.
So we need a motion, we can't do a motion in committee of the whole. We have to...
If you just want to keep going, I just want to go back.
Oh, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's good. We can't vote on anything anyway, so you're safe. Okay, thanks, Jennifer.
Yeah, so the last item that we had to talk about was the minutes. So as council's aware, we take minutes at every council meeting and every committee meeting. The minutes are approved at the next scheduled meeting, and they're posted once they are approved. One thing that we've never had a...
I wonder if we could wait for Counselor Montgomery to come back.
Sure, that might be better. So we will take a quick break. I'll just grab some water.
Your Worship, in keeping with procedure, we probably should come out of committee and make a motion to recess.
Okay, so...
Move to come out of committee of the whole, Your Worship.
We have a motion to come out of committee of the whole, all in favor? Okay, we're out of committee of the whole?
Move to recess.
We have a move, a motion to have a five-minute recess. All in favor? And we're on a five-minute recess.